This is a hybrid meeting. Meeting is in progress, thank you. Uh, this is a hybrid meeting. Uh, the purpose of the meeting is to engage with the Bonneville Power Administration. On their ongoing efforts to mitigate Clalum County West End outages and improve reliability. As part of that effort, BPA will be providing a PowerPoint presentation for local, for the local stakeholders and PUD Board of Commissioners. Uh, after the presentation, we'll take a short, maybe five minute break, and then we'll take public comments and have a question and answer session. So I'm going to turn it over to our general manager, Sean Worthington, for introductions.
Uh, thank you Commissioner Hayes. Again, good afternoon, everybody, and thank you for joining us. Uh, my name is Sean Worthington. I'm the general manager here at the PUD. Um, I do want to go around the table real quick for our stakeholders and BPA and do introductions, but just sort of a little bit of background information about how we got to today. Um. Back in April of last year, the PUD sent a letter to the Bonneville Department Administration CEO, John Harrison. Um urging immediate action to address reliability concerns on the west end of Clalum County. Specifically, the transmission segment between Silverado and Sappho. And as part of that letter process, we reached out to our community stakeholders and asked if they'd be interested in being a signatory. On that letter, and we got overwhelming response. Um, the uh stakeholders out west, you know, the the unreliable power that they receive um has significant impacts on the communities that they represent. And so they asked to join our efforts in urging Bonneville to take action. So since sending that letter, the PUD met with BPA onsite out of the transmission uh segment. And we met with uh uh quite a few people from BPA, and they showed us some of the um strategies that they're using to mitigate the outages. And so today's meeting is a continuation of that dialogue, so that our stakeholders and the public can be aware of the efforts that have been ongoing. So part of today's meeting is going to be a presentation by BPA. Um, there's going to be interactive dialogue between the members at the table here. And then the conclusion of the presentation, um as Ken mentioned, we'll have a break and then we'll open it up for public comments. So the members of the public online and in the audience here can engage in the process. So uh with that, again, thank you, everybody for being here, and um I'll start with uh my three commissioners and then our stakeholders. And then Melanie, I'll turn it over to you to introduce BPA and um queue up your presentation. So Commissioner Hayes?
Yeah, Ken Hayes, uh PUD Commissioner District One.
Uh, John Purvis, uh, uh, PD Commissioner Two.
And Phyllis Bernard, UD Commissioner District Three, the West End, and thank you so much for being here.
Hi, Commissioner Mike French from Clalum County, and I also represent District Three, which is the West End of Clalum County.
Hi, Dr. Suzy James, President of Peninsula College. We have campuses in Forks, Port Angeles, and Port Townsend.
Karen Affeld, I'm the Director of the North Olympic Development Council. We are the Regional Economic Development District for Clalum and Jefferson Counties. And uh, we do extensive work on the West End um and work on energy uh reliability and resilience.
Ted Fletcher, Mayor. Thank you for invite inviting me and our community.
Rex Sabner, the Business Manager, Financial Secretary for Local Seventy Seven, and we cover all construction on the West End.
And then I'm Mick, Communication Manager for Clalum County Economic Development Council.
Melanie. Okay, thank you. Um. Sure you can hear me. So uh, yes, I'm Melanie Jackson. I'm the BPA Transmission Account Executive for Bonneville Power Administration. But um Clalum County PUD is my customer.
Hi, I'm Sir, and I'm BPA's Power Management Manager.
Hello, I'm Chuck Shepard. I'm uh BPA's Vegetation Management Manager.
Hello, I'm John Lottie. I'm the Vice President for Transmission Build Services at Bonneville Power. So my teams are all of the teams out in the field that take care of the operations, maintenance, construction, and emergency response.
Hello, my name is Adelmo Delacruz. I'm the North Region uh Operations and Maintenance Manager. John is my supervisor. And uh my staff uh takes care of the planned and emergency uh maintenance out in this part of the Northwest.
Hello, my name is Aleka Sinova. I'm the Transmission Lines Project Manager.
And we do have a couple of folks in the audience also uh supporting our vegetation management and forestry um. Work. Okay, so um, thank you, Sean, for the introduction and sort of one, one of the things that we want to try and do here today is not only for the PUD. I think the PUD has a really good sense of the challenges that we are facing um jointly. But also for the, you know, the folks here who are represented by the local community. We want to do some education and do some level setting in terms of understanding those challenges in a greater detail. So um, we will kick it off with that. So. Okay, so um we just did introductions. Again, just this is a high level um agenda. Um, want to give some background on the, the the line at issue and then uh surrounding challenges. And then talk about some um things that are happening as well as uh things that are anticipated to try and help um improve uh unplanned outages. Okay, um, just talked about this a little bit. Again, want to share some basic information about BPA. I will cover some of the um, the basics about, you know, what we do and the services that we provide. Um, some insights on the operational issues. Um, and then, like I said, discuss some of the, some of the things that we're considering going forward. Okay, this is obviously very detailed, but it is meant to be really illustrative of the footprint for BPA and the high voltage transmission lines that we um service in our service territory. So um mainly it's Oregon, Washington, Idaho, and Montana, but it goes into Canada, parts of um Wyoming. Um, and then further south, uh uh we have connections into California. So, but this again is meant to sort of show the footprint. And there's a lot, there's a lot of land to cover there um and try and do um provide reliable service too. BPA um is a federal agency, um but we are um self-funded, so that means we do not take appropriations from Congress. Um, we have four basic business lines plus our um corporate um services. So you'll see there's Transmission Services, Power Services, Energy Efficiency, Environment, Fish and Wildlife. Um, I'm here today representing our Transmission Service Business Line, as well as most of these folks here with me. Um, we um maintain and operate the high voltage transmission lines in the service territory. Um, mainly to um utilities. There are one or two, I think, direct service industries left. Um, but again, it is wholesale, power sales, and uh transmission in our footprint. Um, Power Services sells um uh generated utilities uh from the, the dams. Um, some nuclear plants, et cetera. So again, those are separate transmission or those are separate business lines provide providing different services. Our energy efficiency um again is our goals are to work with utilities um to provide support for energy efficiency um initiatives. And then Environment, Fish and Wildlife, um again, covering um the fish to services, um habitat, et cetera. Um, this is just a highlight of some of the areas that we uh have under our strategic plan goals. Um, again, these are things that we try and promote as a utility, a wholesale utility. Um, as a federal branch of the service, so interest in people, enhancing the value of products and services. Financial health strength. Again, this is um pretty critical. Again, we're not um appropriated by Congress. We have to make sure that we are a low-cost provider of both power and transmission. But we have to recover those um costs. Um, that also goes along with um managing our assets and reliability and then um modernizing wherever possible. Okay, talked about um one of the nation's largest high voltage transmission systems. Um, again, there are other um, high voltage utility providers within that same footprint, but we are the largest. We um operate and maintain about three-fourths of that system. Um, I did highlight Oregon, Washington, Montana, um and then you'll see some, some other areas that we checked as well. Um, again, we are not a direct-to-consumer utility. We are a wholesale provider of transmission. Um, to those other, let's say, Clalum County PUD, who provides it to the retail customers.
Yeah, I will point out, our area is home to the only remaining direct service uh connection, which is Port Townsend.
Port Townsend Paper Company, also my customer. Yes, thank you. Okay, BPA assets. Um, again, just another illustrative slide, two hundred and sixty-six thousand six hundred acres of corridor right of way. Um, and then the lines that, that that includes. It is a large footprint. And um you'll hear a little bit more in detail about why that's challenging for us to operate and maintain. And why we can't have people everywhere at all times. So. Okay, I think this is.
Yep, take it from here.
Okay.
Yeah, thanks, Melanie. So I'll zoom into the electoral infrastructure that's pertinent to uh Clalum County PUD. So the service provided to the PUD comes from Fairmont Substation, which is just near Discovery Bay. And from there, we have two transmission lines that go from there and go out to our BPA's Port Angeles Substation. One of those two thirty KV lines has a tap that serves Happy Valley, uh and then from there it serves the PUD as well. Uh, the main players here are obviously Port Angeles, Sappho, and uh Silverado Substation, the PUD Substation. There's a tap there eighteen miles to the west of Port Angeles Sub. Um, let me see. So yeah, Silverado is eighteen miles there, and the focus of this conversation today is primarily that the rest of the section between uh Silverado Sub and Sappho Substation, which is uh twenty-four miles.
Excellent.
And yeah, here's just a visual of that right there.
All right, uh can you hear me all right? Uh, I'm going to jump into the vegetation management piece of the presentation here. Again, I'm uh Chuck Shepard. I manage BPA's Vegetation Management Forestry Program. Um, we have a Natural Resource Specialist that covers the Olympia District. That's Jason Hunt. Um, he's one of my team members. I also have in the back of the room, I have John Tyler. Here's our Chief Forester. And Harley Kennedy is with our Realty Group. He's a, an Danger Tree guy, helps us out from my department. What I want to depict here is, this is some of the data that we utilize to analyze the transmission line. So we, we do a lot of uh patrols, uh aerial flights. We also do LiDAR, which is light ranging detection. So it's, you fly over the line with a helicopter, it shoots laser beams down, and then based on when they reflect back, you can tell you heights of trees. Heights of the vegetation in the corridor. It can't tell you the health of any of the trees. Uh, but what this depicts is those uh blue globs are tree crowns that are tall enough to fall into the conductors. So that's the areas that we target when we, we look at our Danger Tree Program, evaluating the health of those particular trees. So I, can you queue up the video at this point? Um, we have a video that kind of utilizes that data that I was going to just run through real quick here. So it gives you a little more perspective of, you know, without getting boots muddy out in the field. And hopefully this will work. Okay, yeah. This is uh created by our geospatial team, and it's consuming that LiDAR data I had mentioned. And uh what they're able to do is create these three D models, and then you can see there's the corridor. And this is a hundred and twenty-five foot wide corridor that is clear, but you can see the height of some of the trees along this corridor. They tower above the conductors. So that challenge we're facing is, is, and, and this is in that uh Silverado to Sappho section and mostly on US Forest Service land. And uh, so that's, there's a challenge in that, you know, they want to maintain trees. But we don't want trees falling in our conductors. So that's kind of a back and forth that we, we go through here. But anyway, I just wanted to yeah, maybe you could hit one of the other videos and uh we'll take a look, just, just a couple of examples. And while he's killing, we don't need to do all of them. Just pick, pick one randomly. That's fine. So this is just another section. Um. And we, and like I said, we use this data when we're putting together our maintenance activities to determine um where do we need to focus on if those trees are tall enough to hit the lines. You don't have to guess. You don't have to measure trees in field. You just got to go look at where you are, and we can put this stuff in the ground, you know, in your hands and see it when you're out in the field. Okay, great. Thanks. So moving on, uh, the next uh slide is just another example of some of the data that we have uh showing the outage history. And uh, yeah, here we go. Um, so I won't spend a lot of time on that in order to see if you can move to the next one. Yeah. So the, just a little bit of background on how our system is set up. So we number our structures, uh the mile first and then the structure number within that mile. So when you see like twenty-six over six, that's the twenty-six mile. That's the sixth structure in that mile. So that helps us orient where we're at. And those squares, the, I'm sorry, the triangles, the green triangles are outages that occurred out there. So we track all of our, our vegetation-related outages, and every one that uh we have, we'll send out an NRS, Jason Hunt. He's, he'll go out and inspect the outage after the tree, uh after the line crews have taken it off the line and made it safe. And, you know, determine what was, what was it caused by, what type of tree. We gather a lot of data, the weather situation, and I think that's another slide, but we can kind of flow through it right here.
So just to clarify, NRS is Natural Resource Specialist. So.
Yeah, sorry about that. Uh, if you go to the next slide. Yeah, so here's the data I was talking about. We collect the species, the height, diameter, how far it was away from the right of way. All of these outages have been trees that have been off right of way. Our current right of way is maintained very well. It's uh all low-growing plant communities, and we maintain it that way through our regular maintenance cycles. And then uh we, we gather all that information and keep it in our database, and we're actually sharing this information with a professor out of uh West Virginia. Who's doing like a nationwide database that analyzes tree-caused outages, so that uh maybe we can learn stuff from that and, and see if we can maybe target certain species, certain areas, certain soil conditions, that kind of thing. So if you move on to the next slide. Uh, here's just an example of the outage that occurred on October eighteenth of twenty-four. Uh, this, I believe, was a big, big giant spruce tree. And it uprooted and took a bunch of trees with it, and it was way back in the forest. I was out there yesterday, beating through the brush, looking at it. And, and it was just amazing how big this tree was, but it had a significant amount of a, a disease called root rot. And if there's questions more detailed on that, I'll let Harley talk about that. Maybe we can ask that later, but uh, and you can see that on the right, that's the hole in the canopy where that tree was. So it wasn't a dead tree. It was green. Uh, it's just that the root rot destabilizes the uh root structure, and it, it's very susceptible to wind throw. And so we had a storm, windstorm, boom, knocked it over, and it took down several trees with it. You go to the next one. And here's another example of uh outage that occurred on uh February third. Uh, similar situation, different species. This was a Douglas fir that fell over and hit the line, and it just sat there and burned on the conductor. It didn't actually cause an outage immediately. So that one uh is, is another area we're going to target for a, a follow-up root rot pocket uh tree removal project. So go, go on to the next. So here's the tree-caused outages that, that we have investigated. So there's other outages that have occurred that are unknown or whether that it may or may not have been a tree, but we, we didn't actually go take a tree off the conductors. So you can see that there's fifteen tree-caused outages. Uh, three of these were caused, what we call classify, subclassify as human caused. One was a guy cutting a log down for firewood, dropped it on his truck and our transmission lines. And two of those other ones were caused by logging activities where they create, we call it a logging fringe. So if you take all the trees down behind a row of trees and leave them there, they catch the wind and fall over on our lines. So we, it's kind of stuff we can't have a whole lot of control over, but we do communicate with the logging organizations. We participate in their meetings and communicate that, hey, if you're doing a logging project near our transmission facilities, let us know. We'll take the tops out of it, so you can safely remove those without having any problems. But.
To be clear, that was illegal cutting. That, that one example, he, he was prosecuted, so.
Yeah. But this, this just kind of shows some of the data that we have. Then we have very detailed reports behind all these, like I said, with the weather conditions and photographs. And uh, uh, it's just, it's good data to keep in front of us here.
Uh, excuse me, Chuck.
Yes.
Did have a question. Uh, on tree-related outage, how do you handle uh snacks or large branches that sometimes cause outages? Where you're aware of them. Uh, there's not much information you can glean from that, so. Yeah, so. Three branches.
Right, right. So I, I would say that, you know. When we have an outage, the first responders is a Delmo's team are, are forming three. The lineman go out and, and control the line to look for those outages. And they would take care of those types of situations if they find them. But we do a routine maintenance program on this line, so I'll, I'll jump into that right now. We, we do a our, our vegetation management program is an integrated vegetation management program, which is uh, and it's cycle-based. So every three years, we're out assessing the conditions of the line for, and putting together a maintenance package. And we do what we call cutlop and scatter, which is managing the floor of the right of way. We do side limbing, which is any limbs that are coming out towards a corridor. We'll cut those off if they reach a certain threshold. Uh, we do danger tree removal as part of that. So that's going along the edge, looking for, oh, here it is, perfect. Uh, and we do access road work. It's clearing out our access roads, not actually rocking or grading or anything, just cleaning the brush out so you can pass down them.
All right. So, so for a detailed inspection and analysis, you're focused on trees that actually fall in.
Yes, yes, that's correct. That's all that needs to know. Uh, and, and then uh we also do a herbicide program to keep those uh trees that are trying to grow. We're, we're fighting the forest. It's always trying to grow in the right of way. And we, we have applied on her site. And this is just a sample of, in twenty-twenty-one, we did a specific danger tree removal project and removed over sixteen hundred trees in that particular stretch of line. Uh, and then in twenty-twenty-one, we also hit our scheduled maintenance activities. We did five hundred and eleven acres of cutlop and scatter. You know, you can see the numbers here, twenty-twenty-four. We did another scheduled maintenance. We took down another twenty danger trees. And so it's next up for maintenance in twenty-twenty-seven. That's not to say, we also do numerous patrols. So we fly over twice a year with a helicopter. We do a, we call a summer readiness patrol, which is a certified utility arborist walking down the right of way, evaluating conditions and determining if we have any clear issues, also assessing for danger trees. And then the lineman do a working patrol. So they're uh mainly addressing equipment conditions, but they do also notify us if there's any vegetation issues out there as well. And then I mentioned the LiDAR. We do that LiDAR every three years prior to the maintenance work. So we then, we use that data from the LiDAR to help us determine what maintenance activities need to be completed.
Few years ago, I had done a big study on several of our utilities with the LiDAR. A three D modeling of the particular structures of the trees. And one of the companies, or several companies, I will, I will give you that. LiDAR, and LiDAR was a huge consumer of that, is what it is.
Yes.
But they do have uh services that allow you to learn about each particular tree, the type of tree it is. Yeah, I mean, within that tree, it dictates the density of the tree itself. Anyway, I can talk to you later about that. It's very, very lucrative and an excellent location manager tool.
Yeah.
Artists done by drone because of the speed they require, you know, efficiency really high for talent.
Right.
But for where you guys are at, um, that, that knowledge is out. Um, and it gives you extremely good tool because it allows you to see which trees are actually a lot of and, and a product or whatever it is, how you get density. It gives you all different color variation.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I, I'm familiar with, with the, those products, and we are working with the Pacific Northwest National Lab trying to consume some uh satellite imagery data to do similar types of things, and our geospatial team is doing spectral imagery uh as, as a new project to, to work on identifying, like you said, that the health characteristics is tricky because of the time of year, and you know, there, there's a lot of, yeah, we can certainly talk afterwards.
Uh, Chuck, I have a quick question or just clarification. The management that you're describing here, this is all within the uh transmission line right of way, correct?
Except danger trees. Danger trees are by their nature off right of way.
Okay.
So there's a whole process that we have to go through when we cut trees. We don't necessarily have easement rights to those. So we have to acquire the rights, and we have to compensate the landowner for those trees. And then I, I'm not going to spend a lot of time, but there's a lot of environmental regulations that, that restrict our ability to do where, like marbled murelet habitats, spotted owl habitat. There are certain windows where you cannot work in the forest. So those, those are some of the things that we're up against in our planning. But yeah, this work here, all of it, with the exception of the danger trees is within the right-of-way corridor. Well, and uh just the access roads, some of that stuff is not within the right-of-way corridor. It's just to get to the corridor. We keep those clear as well. Uh, next slide. I'm done at this point.
This one. That's sort of, that does get to your point. Um, is that the, the, the main issues are outside of our right way?
Yeah, all of the issues are outside the right of way. We, we don't have concerns with vegetation inside the right-of-way corridor. And as the, the short video clip shows, we're up against two hundred foot tall trees. Or even trees are up on a bank, but that one outage we were looking at yesterday, we were standing, the stump of that tree is above the conductors. So that's kind of challenging because now you've got, that entire tree can cross that whole line.
Doesn't a tree uh from outside the right of way falling and laying across the conductors prevent significant fire hazard?
It could, yes.
Seems like there should be some overarching authority that gives you a.
I, I'd say we are working with the Forest Service on, on uh coming up with solutions. One of the things we're considering is we call the wire zone border zone, where the wire zone would be the right-of-way corridor. And then the, the border zone, you'd cut any tree down that's tall enough to hit the line. Now here, that's thousands of trees. Then at one stretch alone, there were four thousand three hundred trees identified that could potentially hit the line. So trying to manage through that, we're, we're trying to pilot that somewhere. Slow, slow, yes.
Well.
Okay, yep.
Well, I was going to ask about that. So basically, go back ten years. It was a quite a ordeal to take care of a danger tree, but uh since the California fires and some other things. Uh, you know, I've gotten a sense, or at least it's been communicated to me, that some of the problems of actually getting to and, and cutting a danger tree today is easier to do than, let's say, ten years ago. Have you seen that?
Little bit. We, we are doing a project in the Lolo National Forest, and, and we're implementing that wire zone, border zone technique because it's in one of their high wildfire risk areas. So yes, they, they are getting better. And I'd say it's probably further on in the slide deck, but we are uh working with the Forest Service Pathologists to uh maybe let's target those pockets that have the root rot, the trees that are causing our issues. So we're going to have them up the end of next month, and we're going to go out and dig around in the dirt and look to see if we can identify, let's get the experts out there.
Yeah, and emphasize what was said, that uh if you're in our area and you need any assistance getting through something like that. Uh, there's a lot of people here, they're all, raise some noise about that.
Thank you.
Another question, if you don't mind.
Mm-hmm.
Um. We are the only temperate rainforest that you have in BPA's footprint, is that right?
I believe so.
Okay.
I love that. Okay.
Yeah. Well, Cascades, but.
Right.
But we're the rainforest?
Yes.
Yeah. Is it possible, would it be helpful uh to request an exception uh for this area, which by definition is going to have a forest that keeps growing much faster, much taller, much bigger than anything else that you have to deal with anywhere else in the footprint?
Mm-hmm.
That seems to me to be logical.
Yeah, that, I know we took and, I'm, I'm not pushing anybody out of the bus or anything, but we had done, and Harley was part of this, but eight, twenty-eighteen? No, twenty-seven, twenty-seven, two thousand seven, two thousand eight. We did a very a full safe backline review and analysis of this line. You go out there, you can still see the orange paint on the trees that we identified that we wanted to take down. We did a very, a full safe backline review and analysis of this line. You go out there, you can still see the orange paint on the trees that we identified that we wanted to take down. Some of these outages are those trees falling over now. And the Forest Service said flat out, that's too many trees. You can't do that. That was a long time ago, but I'm willing to take another run at it and work for the Forest Service. I believe they're coming around.
I would enjoy working with you on that.
Happy to do that. Yeah, we we are actively having that discussion with with the Forest Service. We will keep working on that.
Okay, the next couple of slides are really meant to illustrate the work that Clonan PUD has. Done in terms of outreach with us. They have been obviously an advocate for mitigating outages to representing their their. Customer base and really trying to represent the 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 impacts that. Those unplanned outages occur. They did send a letter in October twenty twenty two. And then again, this is very high paraphrase. There was a lot more detail in the correspondence that they sent, but. Again, wanting to reflect that we have heard from Clonan County PUD. We, you know, acknowledge the impacts that these outages have and we want to be a partner going forward. Again, you know, that's part of what I just reiterated that we're aligned on goals to reduce unplanned outages. Talked about the trees that we had cleared during that time. Key points of looking at expansion of right aways. As well as possible consideration of a parallel line and then upgrading the the transformer. Okay. Okay, second letter to the administrator again really led us to today. Readied concern over duration of outages, invited us to come up and do a tour of the right of way, which we did last October. And then meet with stakeholders and that is where we are today. So. And then we'll outline some additional work that has been done since that tour on the the right of way and then. More items to come. Okay, Q and A. So these are questions that we have heard. Pretty consistently, we just wanted to highlight a few, so I'm going to let Adelma talk about these.
Yeah, so thank you, Molly. Yeah, so I'll talk about the outage durations and I'll call the anatomy of an outage response. But just a little bit of background. So Bonneville Power has thirteen minutes district headquarters, the Olympia District being one of them. We also have them in Covington and. Wenatchee and Eugene and North Bend, all over the Northwest. Olympia is the one for this serving this area. So when we get a notification, we have alarms at Port Angeles, we have a alarm, then lots of things happen in the background. Our dispatchers. Get it and then they start calling our electrical workers. Our linemen are just one of the employees they talk to. We also. They also get a hold of our substation operators and then that they dispatch them out and go to the substation. And do their inspections and then our linemen gather this outage can happen anytime of the day. So. It takes them a little bit of time between sixty nine minutes to get to the substation at Olympia. And then from there, it's about another three, three and a half hours to get up here. So. From the time the outage occurs until the time that our crews, they're not even on the right away yet. It's still about another four and a half, five hours from the time to get there. That is just the physics of of what's going on behind the background in the background. And then, of course, inclement weather and road conditions can also play a factor on the travel times. And then when we get to the right away, then it just takes some time, you know, on a good day, it's still slow going through the right away roads. But like the one we had in early February, there was twelve inches of snow on the ground. So you can just imagine driving through. The right away where it's just a lot of bad driving conditions. So that's what's taking up a lot of the time. So that is what's happening in the background. So the other question that was asked is why can't sound through clown crews work on our BPA lines ultimately comes down to the safety of the employees. And the reliability of the system. There's also different work practices involved between Clonan employees and Bonneville employees and the interaction between the two. If we don't do enough times, it's just it can set ourselves up for any type of inadvertent or somebody could get hurt. So that's the reason why. We've historically not done it that way, but we do have mutual assistance agreements in place, not just with Clonan, but with all of our other utilities, CLC light. So we just have those mutual aid agreements in place. They get invoked every now and then. But as you can see in the past, we've worked collaboratively without any formal agreements when possible. And we're starting to see the the benefits of of some of those. Where our employees are getting direct information from the solemn dispatchers. So I.
Yes. One thing that a lot of people don't realize and and P my PUD agrees with that statement. But primarily, there's some restrictions on the ability of one organization or contractor. To work on another organization's facilities and that's enshrined in OSHA and and Washington. WAC codes that basically requires a substantial information transfer. For that work to happen, for actual work to happen. And within the timeframe of three, three and a half hours, that would take their local operator, if he's in the area, to basically meet with. Probably almost in person would be required. You could probably come up with something, but it would take most of that time for that individual. To pass on enough information for our crews to safely work on the line. And and we understand that. We would not let another organization work on our line. And that's the same same thing would be would take place. But I will say that as far as. BPA's willingness to allow our crews to perform actions, not actual work. But actions within their substation, within the with along the lines and reporting and coordinating with their crews. I believe it's probably closer than any other BPA customer that you have.
Yes, and that's great segue into the next slide because that's exactly where I was going to go to. That's exactly. Type of collaboration we're getting with the PUD is that when, obviously, when there's a, we have problems, the PUD also has some problems too. So it's not like there's PUD staff that's. Available because you have your own set of problems. So that's part of the issues, practically speaking, that we've seen as well. So it's not like there's a whole bunch of PD employees that can patrol the lines every time there's an outage. Yes.
Question, are there other areas where it takes maybe more than three to five hours to get a crew on site?
Yes, yes, yeah, there are.
Adelma, can I ask a question for the benefit of the public? So when when there is an outage. There's a lot of our customers who take to social media to express their frustrations. And one of the things that they continuously talk about is there's been a storm warning in place for, you know, many days. Why isn't BPA being proactive and sending a crew up when they know there's a storm coming? Or conversely, we get the question all the time, why doesn't BPA just station a crew permanently in Port Angeles? So for the benefit of. Maybe touch on that.
Sure, great question. And here we we have a storm coming. So this is a great test today. What are we doing? What is Bonneville doing to prepare for the storm that's actually going to come today? So we are preparing for that. We are preparing. The linemen are getting all their vehicles fueled up. Again, the UTVs and trailers all ready to go. Their bucket trucks are getting ready to go. Making sure everybody is accounted for. Some people are on vacation, so we might need to all the resources. The issue we have and have seen in the past is that where there's storms, we don't have a perfect crystal ball where the outages, if any, are going to happen. And that is part of what we've seen is that we will get ready. But then we just wait for where the the outages occur. Let me give you an example. So back in November. It was euphemistically called the bomb cyclone and it it was about mid-November, I believe. So it was coming in and I I was actually in Pasco at the time. And I was with the Chehalis line form and and because of that, the day before, he went back to his headquarters because we were expecting outages. So just like we do all the time, we get ready, prepared. That's exactly what we did. We had no outages in the Olympia District, none whatsoever. It hit with full force in King County and in our our Comptemans headquarters. Those are the type of things that we run into. So we get prepared, but we don't know where those are going to happen. So today, here's an outage, a storm coming in. PA Sappho may not get hit at all. It it may not get hit at all. So that's part of where we have the issues that we have responsibility, not just for this one area, but also get prepared for this area. We just don't know whether the outages, if any, are going to hit. So that's part of. That's part of the issue why we don't always do that. But there is a component, not just the lineman, but we do have operators that we do. In fact, a Port Angeles operator right over here. So we already have that resource available to do the isolation of the bad sections of that line. So does that answer your question? All right, um, where are we? Okay, I think we're on the next slide. So you were referring to there earlier, there are tasks that the PUD does provide while our our Olympia line crew is en route and they will patrol, inspect and. Provide information, which is fantastic information. If if they find something, they pass that on, which has been helpful for our crews and they'll help minimize the amount of. Time it takes for us to traverse the right away because it it just is just slow going when you're on that right away. And again, they're looking at things. At midnight and they're, you know, I'll get all the spotlights on. They're just looking for problems. So it's helpful when the PUD staff, if they are available to do that. So that's been a great collaboration with the PUD. There was a question also about the redundancy in the service and we might get into that early later on. But in general, a second line is less likely to improve the service to the area as it's going to traverse the same geographical area which Chuck already referred to that you saw on the LIDAR. Screen there. It's going to experience the same type of outage conditions as the current line. Yes.
Yeah, I will say under the current right away conditions, that's a true statement. But I would caution that we not assume that a second line wouldn't improve. The service reliability if its construction was sufficient right away and and how it's built. Because there's a lot of evidence. We have two lines on single structures coming up to the peninsula. And we have two eight structures from BPA for Vermont to Port Angeles and they are substantially more reliable. Having two two circuits basically. So if we had a service on the west end that had sufficient right away and was constructed. In a in a good way, would be very reliable. But I do agree that under the existing right away, single structure with two circuits. Would tend to have almost as many outages as we do now.
Correct, right, right. Next slide. So some of the actions that we've taken and Chuck step in here if there's anything you want to go more in detail because some of this was covered under yours slides. So in twenty twenty one, BPA did emergency removal of or eleven hundred identified danger trees. Again, those danger trees, what we call DTs are off right away trees outside the hundred twenty five. Foot corridor that Bonneville has on that line. We did, we conducted a site visit last year with the PUD Forest Service staff and our environmental staff as well. In twenty twenty four last year, as General Manager was talking about, there was a joint meeting out there on the right away where we got to. Look at some problem areas and look for some opportunities at that meeting. And then Bonneville has also done some work this to minimize the duration of the outages. We know that there's a lot of erosion. On in that area and on the the main road is called Forest Service Road thirty. We did some access road improvements so that if there's any issues on that section of the Silverado to Sappho section. That it would not unduly delay us in responding with our trucks and our UTVs and other equipment that need to go in there. So we will continue. In fact, we have more work on that road later on this August. And so there's going to be additional work going on there to, again, improve the access road. All right, next slide. All right. So just in general, some of the other activities that we do, we conduct regular maintenance. Chuck talked about that. Our line crews do patrols out there, look at. Patrols every year, check out the insulators, check out the guy wires, pole conditions, see if there's any any problems with that. Our aircraft services do aerial patrols out there twice a year. Whenever possible, we work without outage on the line or when we do, and you'll see some pictures. There's some pictures here, some live line work that we've done in the past. But also when we do have to do some, I'll call midnight outages, we work with the PUD staff. To make sure that they're all done in conjunction, so we don't take multiple outage as well. The PD staff does work on their electrical equipment. Will also coincide our outages to work on our equipment at the same time. So we don't increase amount of outages for the customers. Let me see here, we do maintenance there at Sappho on the switches and at the taps there at Silverado. And also we have other electrical equipment that help identify with a problem areas with a system protection and communication equipment. You know, one of the things that our line crews are looking for as they're driving is what we call targets. And that's just. Term we use for identifying where is location of the the tree. I mean. Where do you want to go and start looking for that? So we look for targets. And that's just information we have on our protective relays at Port Angeles substation that our operator will see, oh, it's a. Phase eight of ground fault in the twenty two mile section, or it's a phase of phase fault in the thirty two mile section. We get that type of information. It's not always perfect. It's not always accurate because the the conditions of the tree is not always conducive to getting good. Electrically care, electrical characteristics. So sometimes there it's a little bit off, but not by much, but it gives us indication of where to start our, where we think the problem area is. All right, next slide. So here's an example of some work that's been recently going on. This was done during hot conditions. This was a project where there's some soil erosion and so we had to relocate the location of the wood poles. And so in order, we had to move it away from the edge of the the hill and which is why we had to raise the tout, raise the poles. Otherwise, the slope of the conductors would have gone too close to the the edge of the the hillside. And so you see the the end of that project there, but you see all the bucket truck, the the equipment on the right is called the. Digger Derek, but it also has some claws on to keep the pole straight while they attach the cross arm at the top to the to the pole. Next slide will show a better picture of this. Not the same work, but this is a different project where you can see that everything here is being done hot. You have the mobile crane there on the right lifting up the. The cross arm with the insulators while they replace the pole. So you literally lifted up the conductors, why and then removed the poles. Conductors are hot and then they installed the new poles and then the lineman went back up to the climb tower and reconnected the cross arm and then. Everything was done hot. Oh, no service interruptions. So those are the type of things that we're trying to do to improve the service without taking any any outages on the transmission line. All right, next slide.
This was me. This is just a screenshot or a snapshot of the outage data that we have in our outage reporting system. I'm not going to go in detail. I kind of already discussed the tree caused outage, but you see there's some unknown. Switching weather, that kind of stuff. So it's it's a lot of other causes than just the the danger trees hitting the line.
I think part of what we wanted to highlight too is this is a snapshot from from five years ago to to last year. And that the the frequency at least has gone down. We hope to improve that going forward. But again. And these are things that that are outages that are caused from trees outside of the right of way. I'm going to hand it over to Colin with the PUD.
I'll just highlight one item here in case people, I know there's a lot of data here. So busy slide here. But where it says auto second column to the on the right outage type automatic, those are the those are the ones that tells us unplanned. And so there's a fault online or protective relays trip the circuit breaker, meaning it opens it up. And then we have what's called, and I won't go into details, but it's called auto sectional scheme over there at Silverado. So it will de-energize the line and then thirty seconds later, our relays will tell the equipment at Silverado tap. It will give time for the equipment to open up and then it'll automatically reclose. The assumption is that something happened on the Silverado to Sappho section. It may have been a tree branch like you were talking about earlier, maybe. Or maybe there was a tree, but it fell off. Let's just test it one more time to see. So we don't take a long duration outage. Those are the ones that say zero. Those are the ones that say zero. And there are a lot of momentaries, as I know the PUD staff know. And the ones that are more than zero or one minutes, those are the sustained outages that it took our linemen some time to get up there and take the tree out of the conductors. So I just want to explain that.
Fewer by one, basically.
Yeah, so really you see now of unexpected.
You are.
Thank you, Melanie. Commissioners and stakeholders, welcome. Thanks for coming. My name is Colin Young. I'm the distribution system supervisor at Clonan PUD. And I'm going to talk a little bit about some of the outages. Some of the outages that B P A has had between their Silverado and Sappho line as well as. Uh, some of the outage we have on the west end as well. So this, I'll just start describing the slides. So this first slide here, you're looking at only, i- it's isolated to outages that are just tree related or weather related. And in this case, it's on the B P A line between Silverado and Sappho, which is the radio line. That feeds all of Forks in the Bay and Collin Bay and all that area. So when this line goes, all those customers are out. So. As you can see here, you, you see uh especially that two thousand eight, eighteen period. Major outage year. Many of you who live here may remember that time, the outages just everywhere. I, I had just moved here and. The amount of trees that were on the ground was staggering and uh was, it was really interesting to see that happen, but um. Lot of hard work and cut those outages resolve. So what we're seeing here is um, since that period, that gradual decline of outages. And as B P A was talking earlier, twenty twenty one was a major tree removal year for B P A. And you can see the trend uh going down from there. Next slide, please. Uh, this is basically the same section line we're just talking about, and this is uh in, in outage duration now. So kind of how, how we, how we were. Uh, these outages and same thing you see from that two thousand eighteen, that gradual decline down to that thirty three hour range. Um, which is kind of where it averages out a bit. Um, we'll see, yeah, we can move on to the next slide, I guess. So on this slide here, looking at. Uh, outages, again, this is west end, so that Silverado to uh. Uh, Sappho line. The first part is B P is uh, is the P U D outages. This is all the outages we had on the west end from twenty twenty two to twenty twenty four. And you can see a kind of list below of types of outages we have from, you know, cars hitting poles to trees and lines to planned outages are included there as well. And over that period, there's, there's a, you can see all the outages each year, and then you can see the duration. Hours for P U D duration per customer hours. And it's kind of consistent through there. And that's, that's what you're seeing. These are what's, what the customers, that's what they're feeling. That's how they're being affected right there is what that number showing. Going on to the next one, uh, the B P A, uh, it's broken into two parts. One is just the weathered trees, kind of going back to that earlier graph. You're seeing the number outages. And those total durations. One thing to point out in the B P A numbers there is. For all hours in twenty twenty four, you can see they're a little different uh for twenty twenty four than the other years. And a lot of that is uh maintenance related, switching related outages that B P A have. Improvements or changes to the system. So. There's made, hey, twenty twenty four was a bad year. Well, not really. This, they're, they're doing a lot of work to try to make things better through planning and. And obviously all our customers are alerted when those. Happening and take advantage of those times as well to do upgrades on our system, because when our transmission line is out because of B P A. For maintenance, we can jump in there and um exercise our switches and do all sorts of other work that we would have to take an outage for otherwise. Uh, that's it for me. I think right now I'll come back a little later to talk about some of the work we're doing on the west end.
Um, well, I will quick on the. On the grat, on the chart there, um, total duration hours, I mean, those are big numbers. Are those like total numbers of customers times the number of hours each?
Yeah, exactly. So if you had, you know, two customers out each for two hours, that's four hours total duration. Yeah. And that's why, that's why the next column is a little more the helpful duration per customer. Yeah.
So you could divide the one into the other to figure out how many customers were impacted.
Correct, yeah. Yeah, and that we get, we could get into Sadie and Katie and all the different uh types. That one's just a good. How was that? How was me as a person sitting in my house? How was I affected? Or it's a, so it's a good.
I think part of what this helps illustrate is that it's not always on B P A lines. It's some of it is also on P U D. So. As much as possible, we try and coordinate on all of these unplanned outages, but it's, it is not always on.
Yeah, yeah. And, and also to back that up, it's just the impacts on an outage on your line just affects so many people. Whereas we're dealing with, you know, onesie twosies here and there, and we do a bigger outs, of course, as well. But, you know, a few large orders from you can have a, a major impact on customers. So.
And then you can correct if I'm wrong, but they take, step back and talk about those bigger public policy issues. In some cases, the exact same solutions are applicable to both. We have US Forest Service at the table, talking about borders zones, we might find solutions for both sides in the case that.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
Thank you.
So this is kind of a repeat of stuff I've already covered, but you know, I'll hit the highlight of it. You know, we do our routine maintenance every three years. Uh, we do corrective maintenance, which is in response to the patrols. So if the patrols go out and find something, they'll go take care of it. Any one of them, the helicopter patrol or the working patrols. Uh, and then uh, as I mentioned, we do uh some readiness, LiDAR. And then we do a danger tree review and our outage investigations. And uh, you know, recently as part of our work with the Pacific Northwest National Lab, I mentioned that they're going to be doing some uh. We did some analysis for the line down in the Vancouver area where we had a outage that occurred from a dead tree. And they did um N D V I, it's a way you determine the health of the tree over time, and they could clearly show that that tree. Or that pocket of trees died since the last time we did maintenance there. So it's, it's, they're trying to replicate that out here to see if they can see any different changes. In the conditions of the trees, that the struggle and Harley can help me out on this or talk later about it, but the uh. The, when the trees have root rot, it doesn't necessarily change the color of their, their needles. And it also depends on the time of year you're flying it and, and doing it, or, you know, the cloud cover and satellite imagery doesn't always capture all that stuff. So. But we're going to give it a shot to see if we can, uh, you know, pull out all the different science we can and throw it at it to see where we can get better at it. And again, I mentioned that the end of next month, we're going to be having two uh forest service pathologists, experts in root rot. Come up and dig around the ground and check out some of these spots that we think are a problem and say, yep, okay, that's a problem. Okay. Then the next thing is, what's the solution? You cut all the trees down? Okay, now you cut all the trees down. Now do you have a slide problem area? Or what grows back is going to be a problem. So maybe you need to cut the trees down and plant a better quality tree in that area. That's all stuff that we want to work with the Forest Service on. So and, and that was a good point that maybe we can improve our collaboration out there. And uh, we are working on that.
Chuck, would a, would an experienced timber cruiser cruising a stand of trees? Be able to recognize a diseased tree, particularly one with root rot, or given what you just said, I mean.
I would have to defer that question to Harley. He's my expert in the room.
So there, there, there are two areas there that uh.
Yeah, if you could, that would be best. Thank you very much, Harley.
Thank you for letting me speak here today. Um, uh, so uh, do you basically have different? Levels of, of infection out there with the root rot? That we have, there's three different root rot types that are ubiquitous to this area. Uh, laminated root rot, shoe, shoestring root rot and anosis. Um, it's. Many times if you've got a, if you've got an advanced stage infection in an area, it's really easy to tell. You take your cruisers out, they'll be able to find it. There's a lot of uh physical signs and symptoms. Uh, usually there's a. A, a dead tree or a series of dead trees that have been, and then there's uh hardwood trees that have grown up inside. It's kind of. Show, it's kind of a, almost a pocket where trees have started to fall down. Oftentimes they're, they fall down in a jackstraw type. Method or way, uh, because they, they don't, they're not all blown down in one way. Um, so they kind of look like pixie stick out there. Um, and then you've got other trees surrounding. That area or that root rot pocket uh that will show signs of decline. So they'll be coning and the, they'll get chlorotic, means they start to yellow up a little bit. Um, and they, they're. The rate of growth tends to reduce. So yes, an experienced, a, a very experienced crew out there should be able to find. Most of those pockets fairly easily. There's others, also some other damage types out there. We've got a lot of bear damage out there. Uh, Chuck and, and John and I witnessed some of that yesterday. Um, so sending an experienced crew through uh is very helpful. There's also a lot of areas that just are not. It's not easy to see uh the, because of the amount of rainfall that this area gets. Um. Usually what stresses out the trees is a little bit of heat and a little bit of dryness. Um, and we don't get quite as that, much of that up here. And so these trees can carry on for years and years and years. Never really exhibit a whole, a very explicit signs of root rot. Um, and then they just fail and those are the ones that get us.
We'd very appreciate. So Ken, to a part of your question. One of the things that um, you know, a lot of utility. Is a natural certified arborist.
Yes.
Cruiser crew necessarily, and I part of the spawn they made, that would be a big standard. But if you are, it's not going to be the same, at least in Washington, it stays in Washington, it is on. Completely different vegetation, how it's, how it is set up for more education, larger, um, in different parts of the country. So that does make a big difference on moving and analyzing specific roads, what kind of trees they are and what those trees are commonly rainforest. You know, in a semi, depending on that experience over. That's, I'm sure that, I'm sure, um, when it brought it out, the P U D has those qualifications and those stories. Those are the ones. And our is still true and doesn't have a station on right then. Those are the, those are the people there that are really able to stay there on when all their members are struggling with those programs. But it's hot, it's worse, you go to all of those.
Yeah, that's, that's a great point. We, we do have certified utility arborists out there and we will be working, I mentioned the, the pathologists, they do training. Danger tree training to different levels. So we will be putting our crews through that and our natural resource specialists through that training. Uh, to better train them on being able to observe those conditions. But like Harley mentioned, it's, it's, it's hard in some cases to identify those.
I guess I imagine that might be another way we could partner with the Forest Service.
Absolutely.
As Fisher Bernard was suggesting.
So my understanding is that um, as our business is changing, that uh, that we realize they have. Um, and at the same time, though. It seems like, you know, the trend on is not really, um, unfortunately, um, although, you know, and I mean, a lot of these are trying to, what, what. It, it seems like this is the time when. And why it is. So, yeah. You know, how, how we.
Perhaps changing the species of the little, actually something that's more soil, they mentioned.
Yep. Right. Yeah, Harley and I were discussing that yesterday out in the field, that maybe a cedar stand would be more appropriate here because they typically don't cause us issues. We want to stay away from the hemlocks and the dud firs and the stickus spruces that are falling over. There's something that's not susceptible, but that's something that we need to. You know, work with the Forest Service that it's their land and we're just to have easement over there. So, but yeah, that's again, it's something else we can. Yeah.
But the point is that requires active force.
I was gonna say maintenance is, is a consideration as well.
My experience here, when I came here and worked with climate in two thousand and two. And after two thousand fifteen, so then a lot of work, you know, here it's very developed. So the things you've all been talking about, and I appreciate the context of what it takes to get up to it on, understanding what it means. Uh, there's very few linemen that have went through more training, more meditation than I saw. Because before the retreat rooms, they were like, you know, I'm worried. So they have to learn, um, a lot of times on fly, there's a storm, I remember every major storm in two thousand, two thousand fifteen here. And of course, I started to eat, or only tell you that is because. Um, I'm not just somebody sitting here and on a panel to discuss the actions. It's literally something where you're even you. On a daily basis, they come, they do a work every night, all hours of the night, all over the morning, you all know.
Yep.
If you, you get to see those, those minimum. But for cloud, so I specifically have this group on the west side, all the way out to Cal Bay. And where I leave act here to several major norms, environmental laws, major stuff that we have. And we pass that knowledge on from during the line to the next operation, you can leave the G R C, which is huge. I mean, if I had a crystal ball, I had an opportunity for it, say, if I would like to see here, I'd just give you a lot bigger right away. Very long, very, very. Or whatever, but I mean, it is, it's constant, it's, it's expensive. I understand the, the prospects and I believe it's with. Thirty eight years, our means of thirty years in the tools, whatever, within the tools working. And it is the collaboration between, they were very deliberate and talking that knowledge, understanding what it means. And those were taking a series and I have to be proud every time I was here and he came up with something, they were listening. And I appreciate that thought. He was terrible at the energy years. I mean, he literally, he said, things that we came back to. Every storm that happened. And I just, I know that you have to be, be understanding that and deal with it, whatever interview and I appreciate that, uh, working with them. Uh, but there's always political issues that happen, spending issues that happen in their community. Which are probably the biggest ones that we really have to deal with. It's very important to have reliability, obviously, this is one of the things that we're doing. And that education for the coverage is huge. And the lineman, the cruiser out there, put in such a, really, really, very. Um, they are pretty fond of duty, they do, do the customer. And they have the, I can express, and sometimes it's tough, because they don't. They have a chemical, and they're not really, it's, it's more like eight, ten, by the time it gets closer in this. And then, so I just want to hear completely, I, I sit here to, I have to communicate. Uh, had this conversation, I get the news, um, with any basis of how much it's critical. And it's the same story. It's just that you don't count this story here anywhere else as a, as a, as a rainforest. And everything gets affected all the way to one of the driest parts of western Washington, where I live in Swin. But you also have that reverse effect when the Canadian, when the weather patterns change and it's swim, the same as what happens in Applebee and Oak. Only the snow, the desert, which is going on with the summer, that in itself has huge potential issues. When it comes to the B P A, B P A is giving, and also all the reasons that you're talking about. Those are huge issues from a house to, and what, and as the weather patterns change, the climate has changed. You know, having to, it's kind of too much for a video sign. Thank you for this.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, thank you. Yeah, my name's John Lottie. Um, yeah, Rex, we definitely have some common ground on what we'd like to see, maybe not clear to Russia, but. Well, we said it that direction. Um, so yeah, I was just going to talk for a few minutes about the visit that we had. Um, you know, we received the invitation. Um, and uh, we appreciated that and we really had a great day. Um, um, coming out to tour. Um, the right away from uh Port Angeles to uh Sappho. Um, definitely focusing in on the Silverado Sappho section. Um, this is uh one of the structures we stopped that. But uh, we can go to the next slide. Um, we met with Sean, um, Shalish. Um, um, some of Sean's uh maintenance foreman and crew members were out there. And a lot of the team members that are here today were out on that visit, Melanie, myself and Chuck and, and John and Harley and. Um, a few others were out there um on that visit. Um, and we were actually on the ground. And we were actually on the ground, standing underneath the the right away. Talking about and and getting a firsthand perspective of the terrain and the slope of the terrain. And it was really kind of an eye opening experience, just the the height. Truly, once you get, you see it, the height of the trees and the vegetation out there. And how easy it would be from a tree as far off the right away as as you know, Chuck's been mentioning can lay across all of the conductors. So it was a great visit. Again, we were able to tour the entire length of the right away. And have great discussions with the Clallum teams about, you know, some thoughts and of what are some of the improvements we might be able to make? And some of the things that they were thinking of and and they're looking into and continuing to look into as well as what we are looking into. And I would say that, you know, the reliability out here and the service out here on this radial bed line is is a, you know, priority and a concern for BPA. And and all of the the teams in transmission as well as as our front office. And some of the others that were on that visit were Joel Cook, our our chief operating officer and Richard Shaheen, our senior vice president for transmission. But as many of you know, things have changed a little bit for us since January twentieth. And Richard and and Joel took advantage of one of the programs and they're no longer here. But that doesn't mean that we don't have the the visibility and the support. That we need to continue to have good collaboration and and work on improvements of the reliability of the line. Next slide, Melanie. So yeah, just reiterating probably back to some of the things that maybe Adelma was alluding to. Just over the last couple of years, we have made some improvements. Fifteen structures, they're they're two pole structures, so that's thirty poles. On the PA Sappo line, I think all of these were in the Silverado Sappo section. So that's the section where we see most of the outages occur. And as Adelma pointed out, some of those were able to do energized with the line energized, so we don't cause an outage and and others we coordinate. With the Clallum to, you know, for the time and day when we do that outage to minimize the impact on roughly the sixty five hundred customers out there on the end that. You know, lose their lights when that that line is out. This gets back to some of the things that Chuck was referring to and wildfire. So that first bullet, we are adding to all of our new wood poles, especially in in certain areas of fire retardant wrap at the base of the pole. It doesn't go all the way up the pole, but it's it's meant to be retardant from fire of a fast moving wildfire at the base of the pole. And we've seen a lot of really good positive. We've had positive experience where we've had these installed and fires have burned through and we've gone out and actually installed them in a hurry. When we've, you know, on structures that we haven't had the restraint, the retardants put on. When there's a fire in the area and we've had really good success. So that's good and something we're doing that will help prevent a little bit of loss during wildfire, we hope. The the crews, the cut and scatter tree vegetation, that's, those are some of the numbers that Chuck was talking about in the corridor. And that's just some of that ongoing right away vegetation management to that we do every year or on on the cycles we do it on. The new poles that we're putting in some, not all of them, I don't think, but some of those were taller. In fact, the ones we visited were significantly higher than the majority of the poles. And we're going to hear from all of here in a few minutes about one of the things that we're looking at. We think there's some advantages to raising those poles, getting them up a little bit higher. So hopefully fewer trees can hit the line and some of the trees might just pass through the line and and go to the crown. And then again, any any outages that we have. You know, we're going to definitely continue to coordinate with you all and and the PUD to minimize impacts to customers as we perform any work that that we're going to do to. Improve reliability. Next slide. Yeah, some key considerations. So I think we've all, and especially seeing the right away. And touring it that day in October and talking with our crews and and the Clallum crews. It's pretty hard to prevent all of the unplanned outages out there in that terrain. I think we have some ideas that, you know. Love to see a wider right away. There's some challenges there. Love to see some, you know, taller structures. We've talked about whether or not a double circuit line would really improve reliability, but it's hard to. You know, without potentially removing all of the trees, it's hard to really. foresee a a situation where we don't have unplanned outages continuing. We have slides in the area that can also impact us from time to time. And then we are, you know, we don't own the land in the corridor, so we have to work with the landowners, primarily the US Forest Service. To get permission and get agreement to cut these lines and. And the Forest Service, as you all know, they've had a lot of changes since January twentieth as well. So we actually have had some discussions that we wanted to continue having because we had our liaison to the Forest Service was out here on that visit in October as well. And we had some plans for her to make some contacts with the Forest Service. And unfortunately, some of those were paused with some of what's happened in the last couple of months. And then Chuck mentioned this, but we do have the environmentally sensitive habitat and, you know, the the marble marolette and the spotted owl. You know, it creates. Some issues for us to get the permits and approve and what we need to move forward and remove trees and conduct work on the right away. Oh, I think, oh, we're gonna, is Victor on the phone?
So is the is the phone line open? We had somebody phoning in from BPA to cover this slide.
Hey, Victor's on, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Thanks, Victor.
Yeah, Victor's gonna talk about our our Chris program and he'll go into a little more detail of that. And then we'll talk a little bit about some of the ideas that we have and and. And then I think we're getting close to a Q and A session.
Sounds good. Hey, this is Victor Hitchens with Bonneville's customer service engineering team. And yeah, I'm here to talk just just briefly about our Chris program. So Bonneville measures transmission line reliability in in two forms. We hit on this a little bit earlier, but essentially system average interruption duration index and system average interruption frequency. So SAD and SAFI. And that provides a really good overview of Bonneville's transmission system as a whole. But customers often experience a lesser quality of service. At their specific points of delivery and case in point here of what we're talking about today. So historically, there's been no overarching program for projects geared towards these improvements. You know, they they come in, we identify them either from feedback from customers or maybe our field services folks. Transmission planners identify areas where there there may be some potential for improvements. But there's there's no like a driving force behind them like we have with some other projects like our tariff driven projects. For example, our line loads and our generator interconnections or projects geared for safety or meeting NERCWAC. Compliance standards, things like that. So over about the last year plus or so, we've been really formalizing and enhancing a new program. That will basically contain a portfolio of network upgrades focused on improving quality of service, managing risk. And providing decreased reliability exposure and increased customer satisfaction. So they're conceptualized and prioritized by looking at both lagging and leading indicators. So we want to look at, you know, what happened in the past. We have a POD specific outage information we can look at and other things, feedback from customers, et cetera. And then we also want to look out into the future and and look at future risks that we might have and and try to handle those before they're a problem. So we recognize that this adds to the overall Bonneville transmission workload. We've got a lot of work on our plate. I'm sure many of you know. But these types of projects are very important to our customers and can have a huge positive impact on their quality of service. So, you know, success is going to be dependent on our ability to execute projects. We've got a lot of work and we're we're resource constrained at times. But we acknowledge this is the right thing to do for our customers. Any questions?
Thank you, Victor. Anything from the panel? Okay. Thanks, Victor.
Yep.
Allah. Right, so again, my name is Alek Chris Novak, project manager. And our transmission team was actually engaged right after that October twenty twenty four site visit. And we were engaged to investigate potential alternatives. The area that we focused on, you know, kind of focused on the structure raises and then maybe a combination or, you know, expansion of that. The tree clearing, you know, outside of the existing right away. I know that, again, we've mentioned trees plenty of times, I think so far. Based on the outage history that we all saw earlier, we can focus on the ten mile section and it's between the twenty six and the thirty five mile. The alternatives that we looked at, they kind of, there was a big range of the alternatives, but some of them included, you know, no structure work at all. So maybe raising structures to up to forty feet. I know there was a picture of one of the really tall hundred fifteen foot tall structures, so we're kind of looking into that option. And then some of the other other alternatives included, you know, maybe no tree removal to potentially fall in tree removal. In twenty five foot increments up to seventy five feet outside of the right away. This will not, again, you know, if we are considering tree removal, you know, we wouldn't be looking at cutting off at twenty five feet, right? We obviously, we'd be looking at that study of the tree root pocket itself. So, you know, if it goes beyond that, you know, that's what we'd be looking at. And that preliminary evaluation was completed mid March and passed on to BP management to take a look at and consider, you know, what alternatives they will be willing to go for. And that we could proceed with. Next slide, please. So I know this was mentioned kind of throughout this presentation, but there's obviously key considerations and risks that, you know, we need to consider when we're looking at this. These alternatives and this mitigation approach. So nearly all ten miles are within the Forest Service and state lands ownership. And then, you know, you know, with all ten miles analyzed, do you have that critical habitat for marble neural edson spotted northern spotted owls? Which are then danger species, you know, and are covered under a danger species act. The impacts that, you know, that the removal of the trees, you know, to that extent, right? The impacts to the environmental resources, primary habitat loss, you know, would probably require more intensive environmental, you know, study and research and coverage. So that would probably require the environmental assessment under the NEPA. And then, you know, if that, if that's where we are, you know, that would have impacts on the project schedule. So we won't be able to start right away. That would have to, you know, we have to consider how long that takes, right? And go through all the processes. Again, as Chuck mentioned already, right? So all tree works, so identification permitting, removal activities, everything would have to have a big buy in with the Forest Service and state lands and their collaboration. So like the worst of all just studies, you know, surveying, removal and everything. Would have to get, you know, get their involvement. The other risk that I I didn't really include in here, but the other risk that we talked about, you know, is that. If a lot of trees are being removed, then we're looking at landslides in the area as well. So we would have to be very strategic on what trees are getting removed and how that's, you know. How are we potentially restoring the area after the tree removal? And then, of course, as you guys all know, you know, there's seasonal work restrictions due to implement weather. And then, you know, of course, the environmental restrictions as well. Because we're in that critical habitat, you would have a lot of restrictions on activities on when this one can be done. So tree removal and construction itself. And as everyone already mentioned, you know, being readily fed, we would try to minimize the impacts to the customers and try to try to minimize outages that we would take. So a lot of this work would have to happen, you know, live, right? So energized work, which limits the construction methods. So we won't be able to replace all the hardware at the same time, right? We can't do that energized, so we would have to probably come back for midnight outages to do some of that work. So those are just the key considerations and risks that we were looking at when we were doing the study.
Excuse me.
Yes.
MBPA is in in wrapping up the study, I mean, it seems like it would be reasonable for Bonneville to consider how. We, you know, the the stakeholders, you know, the the community leaders and and electeds can help navigate some of these, help navigate and resolve some of these hurdles. You know, in a partnership, is that being considered or is that something we could? Ask to have included so that we can develop a strategy and partnership with BPA? You know, like working with the Forest Service and DNR.
Right, yeah, I think right now we're looking at, and John can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think right now we're looking at execution methods and what options do we have? We have several methods on on getting the project started and how it's executed. And I think the, another consideration that we all need to think about is that, you know, how is that impacting schedule? So if we start combining a lot of elements together, as you guys all know, right? It turns projects into a massive multi-year project and that will limit us, like what work can be done and how much immediate action can be taken.
I think consultation with clown beauty though is soon for all of the options. So again, continuing the partnerships and wherever possible, if you have influence in areas that maybe we don't or vice versa. That would be the goal.
I I do want to just mention one thing about the character of the population in this area. Forks is timber capital. Forks High School used to have multiple classes in the timber industry. And everybody knows those trees at a professional level. And so we're not just talking about, you know, the cookie baking, you know, mom in the PTA and stuff like that. We're talking about real timber folks who have a lot of experience and could offer some significant input, some meaningful insights. So maybe we'll reach out to them from the PUD side. Right, yeah.
Right. Well, you know, and again, Melanie is always engaged on any projects that come through transmission. So we do keep that communication, you know, channel open, right? So we do welcome any input and assistance. Go ahead.
Do you want to take this one down or you want me to hit it?
Sure, I'll take it. So now it's it's kind of where we're at and and maybe where we're headed a little bit more. Along the lines of what all I was saying, but. You know, we talked with Chuck and Harley more about the root rod issues and 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 what we're going to do. But I thought I just mentioned kind of where we're at in this this phase. So all I and her team have put together some options and we're doing some risk analysis based on the options that that she just went over. And how much improvement we get out of the raising the structures and the tree removal. And it's something that I think we're very interested in moving forward. Over the next month is probably the time when we would look at this as a project and see if we can resource it. And and how quickly we can move on it. So we'll definitely know probably more information about a month from now as to where the stages are. One of all the suggestions is that we break the project up. Into two pieces, maybe tree removal piece and raising the structures of another piece. And maybe even the structure raises, we break into smaller segments, which might give us some more flexibility and ability to move a little path for you, John.
Yes, I'm intrigued about raising structures. Raises some questions. As I understand it, you do not plan for major rebuild work on that line. You're generally taking, taking a maintenance approach. When structures get close to failure, you group them, you replace them, much like you did in the last year, is that correct?
Well, yeah, we don't have a major rebuild plan for that line right now, but we do maintenance and and we do testing our wood structures and replace them as needed. But what we're doing here is would be in addition to that program.
Right, so one thing to keep in mind, just like this, I guess, last year. It does increase the number of outages for the year the work's done. So it will actually make your liability worse, make it better in the long run. Plus, if you're doing, you know, twenty poles, let's say twenty poles a year that you're raising, which may have a very positive effect on. On outage, avoiding outages. While you're doing that work hot, you're also having some some outage with it. It's gonna, it's gonna create a lot reliability issues, but it is one solution that seems. If it doesn't cause structure problems as far as damage. Right now, as far as I know, when trees fall, it's rarely a conductor break or a structure break. As long as the collar structures are sound and can endure, you know, tree. As long as the collar structures are sound and can endure, you know, tree strikes, it may be a very valuable way to go. It's just gonna be hard to get there because it'll take a lot of years to replace a lot of poles to a newer height with many outages while it happens.
Well, and I think that's where that piece comes in, right? The collaboration with Clalum, collaboration with, you know, the city, right? I think it's. It's us understanding the need, you know, and really trying to work through that to minimize how many outages do we have, you know, what can we afford to have as a community?
And I I do like the idea of doing both, looking at the structures. And the trees because it's a co- combination of both of them. Far to.
Understanding with the support and integrity of the line. For much better with the community.
Right.
Scheduling.
And and like John's referring to and all, hopefully we can do many of these energized. And others, we definitely coordinate with with the PUD and the utility about the timing of those outages.
Yeah, I was just gonna second that. Yeah, we we do that. Anytime we know there's gonna be long duration outages, we work with utilities, our our operators are working with the utility dispatchers. And their field counterparts for those customers. To find out when's the best time to do this. And so typically that's why there's always a lot of midnight outages that occur all over. When these when these do happen and we realize there's state rules like with refrigeration, so you know, with food, and so we got to keep to six hours. So that's the type of stuff that we. Ten, we do with our customers is find the best time when we both have a need to take midnight outages, then we'll coordinate that.
Part of the digital, so I appreciate. One of the things that that I deal with quite a bit in utilities. Is it is the big change, of course, and to the point of survival and so forth and so on. When we had deep holes, we've computerized them and there's all kinds of different. You know, endangered species that people have to deal with, whether it's birds or anything else that happened to be impacted down the right way. Individually, so right now you can't get rid of them. But they still have the same issue to deal with. One of the things that we worked on was. Pass the right way that they have the system. They have taken and worked out with the communities, including the credit, the landowners and or warehouse or and the work of COVID helmet and or. Is that the remove the trees to the highest distance that are funded the highest. So they cannot fall in environment. Those have this long-term danger problem because if it is a habitat. Then how do you mitigate that? And that's where a lot of sense, I mean, we literally have holes and put habitat for even solar and so on. So there's a whole bunch of ways of not having to remove trees. It's a tree that's not hard to title. And so then the right way, normally we're involved into it, it's now reduced to a height that's not. Obviously, if there's a tree health and so forth and so on, if you let a tree grow up to be behind the people, that's wrong. And that's where you can, the forest management, you can work with whoever, you know, that's in how many of that, that's one of the things that. It's actually seen some positive forks that have been highlighted in being truly not necessarily on the PPA. But the concepts are both the same. And it's been positive role and competitive and it's obviously hot spots that you're ready to just like come this way. There's areas where the trees are higher, the stuffs are higher than the payload. And so you need a two hundred and fifty foot structure. You shouldn't pass any of those. So there are going to be some pieces.
Yeah, you bring up a good, we do have that tool in our toolkit box that we do helicopter topping. And we've done this with the Peachy Creek Fire, the wildfire that ran through along one of our lines down the Salem area. And they go through and just grab onto the top of the tree, cut it off. Pull it back and drop it safely away. So that's one of the other areas that you're not necessarily removing the tree. But then you got to be careful you don't create a future hazard tree because if it continues to grow, now you've got two tops. But yeah, that that is one of the techniques we're considering. Yep.
Yeah, and it's interesting, Chuck, you said that because one of the things that we brought up. And this is years ago when we had power problems. That happened with the forties, fifties, then we literally have the power. For purpose, so you wouldn't get lost in the problem. Their capping treats the same way. They don't get split in. Because the 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 metal they're using on hot, depending on what it is, I've seen before, good at caping trees. And then radical growth and it can spur, but that's where the main treatment on most trees, I will cover. And splits and that's the same. It's interesting to see the good thing. People crying, they're keeping those trees down. So you're not saying you're capping a tree every three years. I'll hear it every year.
Yeah, I think that's about it for us, Melanie. Definitely continue working with the the Forest Service on on the tree removal and expanding. You know, I think we would have some agreement about the root rot we're seeing and and Harley, you know, sharing a little more with us. So. Hopefully we get some favorable favorable response there as well. But and, you know, Chuck touched on earlier and Rex, you were talking about the the work we're doing. You know, in relation to that satellite imagery and other, you know, light R type tools. So. And and definitely continue to encourage the the collaboration that we have like we're having today and and. What we have with the with Sean and his team has been really great for me. Thank you.
And we have one more slide from the PUD. Colin?
Hey, I'm back. All right. So I'm going to talk about some of the we're doing on the West End and how we're. First there, from the PUD side of things. So I have a list here for. West end resilience projects that we have. But on top of that, we're also pursuing federal and state resiliency grants. We're doing a forks transformer replacement project, the Bania Bay substation transformer replacement project going on. Replacing multiple circuit switches over there. And conditioning our B nine KV mobile substation that we use for. Being able that way, you know, we bring that trailer in and we can isolate a substation transformer and keep the lights on for everyone with that. So we're. Doing some hydraulic equipment that's oil that run, you know, that uses oil or that sits in oil. Our sectionalizers and reclosers, some of those units that they. Being filled with oil, there's some spill risks there as well as they respond slower and actually have less. Abilities than the electronic ones who are making switches over that. Those electronic reclosers can operate faster. They can do. You know, much more variety of operations. We can coordinate them. Risks of of high impeding falls from trees and things. We're underground distribution lines where feasible in in areas in the West. Direct berry cable as well. The lights on as well as lots of projects to replace our wood transmission poles with fiberglass. And those fiberglass poles have a lifespan that's almost double, potentially more than a wood wood pole as well. Being able to respond better to trees falling in the lines and then. On the wildfire medication part of those. Wood to fiberglass transitions also, those fiberglass poles hold up better. If fires do come through, there's less chance of them. Then also you're doing, of course, aggressive tree trimming. We have a whole crew dedicated on the West Side that's doing major tree trimming work. We received a grant for the portable solar panels with battery backup. So what this is, is customers that qualify with medical equipment that they need. They will be able to hook up these batteries. There'll be a relatively large battery. With portable solar in it so that if there is a major outage, they can plug into that and keep their medical equipment going. In 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 larger duration outages. And then on the other side of things, we're also doing a feasibility assessment for utility scale generation and battery backup. And we're we're in the feasibility stage, so we're looking at things like environmental sensitivity, cultural sensitivity, the impacts on rates. And ease of permitting and and factors like that, as well as making sure to be clean generation. And we don't have a location on that yet. Obviously, it's we're in the assessment stage. But those are some of the things that we're working on on the West End.
Thanks, Colin.
Thank you.
Last one. You want me to? Was an aura question. This is really just a summary slide again to reinforce the collaboration between Clalum County PUD and BPA. Again, I think, you know, having more of these conversations more often helps highlight some of the opportunities. Opportunities, challenges, and then areas of interest. So that's really what this is meant to do in summary.
Yeah, I I would say that second bullet has been a big one for me and, you know, Adelmo and his teams and, you know. Our crews have a relationship, our crews with Sean's crews have a relationship and. And, you know, if if they're able to start patrolling, if if we have targets and we think the outage is is on our line. It's been very, very helpful for us to have them get out there, patrol. Remove access issues, you know, clear the access roads and identify and help point our crews either to where they aren't seeing things or where they are seeing things. So. Really appreciate that. And I think that's been really great and and hope it continues. So thank you.
I would reiterate that. And then one of the things that was. Interesting to me is the communication is really challenging out there. So even cell service is, you know, challenging. Yes, so but having, again, the the PUD crews go out, patrol, get to where cell services alert our crews. En route has greatly diminished the outage duration.
And we did do a pilot with Starlink here recently and we're we're hearing really fabulous things. We have Starlink. Systems for a couple of our crews and over down on the Oregon coast. So they're really working well. So I I think we'll be expanding that and. And so that should be help us well with communication.
So that's it for the formal presentation.
All right, we're gonna adjourn for like a five minute break. Then we'll reconvene and have a public comment and further Q and A. So thank you. Don't wander too far. But this time we're gonna provide an opportunity for a public comment as well as continued question and answer amongst the stakeholders and with our BPA partners. Eric, do we have, let's see, do we have anybody in the audience? Actually, right now we have nobody.
Everybody is moving right now.
Yeah, I've got a little. So. I don't think we have any guests other than. Eric, do we have anybody online with their hands raised other than what we see here? But we do have. Is it Miss Catherine Jordan?
Hi, I want to, I work with the Cape Flattery School District. I'm their Director of Student Services and I want to thank you all so much for this very informative. And my question has to do with those unscheduled, typically weather-related outages. And I'm wondering particularly when they are a BPA line, if. There can be more consistent communication. Clalum PUD has done a very good job recently on its Twitter line, but sometimes we don't know anything for several hours. And those of us who choose to live in the far west. Know that it's a rugged environment and we know that we have the power outages, but when we're planning for school, it would be helpful to know. Do we, are we looking at a BPA outage? Because if we are, we are releasing students to go home early. And then if it's been several hours. You know, getting an update, are we having school the next morning and things like that? So having that information would be helpful for planning and communication with our families.
So I will talk in general, we are trying to improve that as much as possible. So we have a public affairs liaison who is. Designated to work with Clalum County Pewee and he has been working to proactively provide information about work that we're doing in the area. And when outages occur as much as possible to provide it to the local media, et cetera. So we are always looking to improve these opportunities, but sometimes when there is an issue that's happening, that's an unplanned outage, there's a storm. That's happening and there's probably higher priority things that are happening concurrently. A lot of times these are in the middle of the night, but yes, we're always looking for opportunities to improve. Our communication with both PUD and then local area residents.
I'll add to, this is a Delmo Delco. So thank you for the question. Yeah, and if there's something that the PUD is needing more from Bonneville, because I know when our crews are out there, our line crews are working. You know, they're doing their best to give our dispatcher the best information about estimated return to service time. It's not always a a science. It's sometimes a little bit art. But we're working with them and I know our dispatchers are working with Clalum dispatchers. So I'm not sure if there's anything. If there's something broken in that link, we would like to know so we can help fix that. But that is our process as we work with the PUD dispatchers.
Yeah, so like like Bonneville, we have a communications representative who updates social media in real time as information comes in. So as our dispatchers receive information from BPA, that's then communicated to our communications person who updates Facebook and our website. But the information is only as good as as the, you know, last time that we got it. So maybe more frequent. Attempts to provide updates on outages might be helpful to address the school district's concerns. But yeah, we do have a communications person who does update in real time.
Ms. Jordan, excuse me. Excuse me. And Melanie? Yeah, I had just wanted to add a little bit that Cape Flattery is extremely remote. It is the farthest western point of the continental United States.
Gotcha.
And so if the school is having issues, you can bet the parents are having really significant issues. And again, we've got that telecom issue of. Yeah, Carol, we're working on that, aren't we? Yes, we are. But it it's it's not easy getting the message through. So the more frequently that it can be going out. The more likelihood people will get it in time to be able to make the arrangements necessary so their children are safe.
Good feedback.
Thank you.
Ms.
So please bring up Clalum County's outage map. And it's this distance from Joyce to Saffol, you know, you say. Minute, you're looking at a minimum of six hours of outage.
Ms. Jordan, would it, you know, you've already heard that we have an active social media presence and that it's real time as things occur, as information comes in. Sometimes that information, you know, isn't coming as quickly maybe as we would like it. Or would it be helpful for you and the school district to have some report on some kind of scheduled interval? Whether we have new information or not? Would that be helpful for your planning?
I think, yes, that's more what I'm sort of hinting at. I follow Clalum PUD on, well, it's now X. And they have been exceptionally helpful. And to give you sort of the idea into schools, when. The power goes out, we do one of two things. We work really hard to figure out, like, is it a big outage? Does it look like it's the entire West End and therefore it's Bonneville Power? So that we know that we need to roll buses and release students. And if that could be posted as quickly as possible, because I heard during this presentation that Bonneville Power may know within minutes if it's their lines. We don't necessarily see that coming out on social media for up to a half an hour. And so we've sort of guessed about that. And then we try to make a decision in the mornings by five AM to let parents know. So if the power outage is going on overnight, which I know is when social media is not always being updated. If there was something that came out at about four AM, which is when I'm up checking and seeing if I can figure things out. That would be helpful for us to make decisions for the coming school day.
Is something we can improve on based on what you're hearing?
Yeah, I mean, we can take a more proactive approach to get information out on Facebook by 4:00 AM. The challenge sometimes is the, is the patrolling. It's hard to give an estimated time of restoration if the cause isn't known. But if you're just looking for information on whether or not it's a BPA outage versus a PUD outage, we could do that.
Well, and if by 4:00 AM you still haven't located it, we know from experience that that's going to be several more hours. And we are going to have to call at least a late start to then see if by 8:00 or 9:00 AM we know something better. And if it still isn't located by 8:00 or 9:00 AM, then we may be calling school for the day. But having some sort of update in like the 4:00 AM window and the 8:00 AM window is very helpful to us for planning and communicating with parents.
So communicating even when we don't know for sure what's going on, that that's where we're at.
So and Doug Johnson is our public affairs leader and he's got his hand raised.
Doug, go ahead.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Perfect. Yeah, I am the other side of that equation, the public affairs person at Bonneville. We, we were having some issues with administration of our Facebook page, so we've not been very good about providing real time updates on social media. Facebook is the primary mechanism we'll use to update those things. We routinely post under Clallum PUD's posts once we know the outage is ours and we get going. One of the challenges we have that I understand from our dispatchers is, as you guys know, cell, cell service is pretty spotty out there. It's hard for our crews to get up-to-date information back to our dispatch center so that they can provide us with updates. But I'll, I'll, I'll be online tonight. Unfortunately, it looks like that bad weather that's rolling through kind of has some of your service territory and it's crosshairs. So we will be posting updates on our Facebook page if this line goes out or if any of the facilities that impact service to Clallum PUD do go down. But we're trying to get better about that as well and, and get as fresh information as we can as things happen. But there, of course, are some challenges that we face that you guys are fully aware of. But we continue to try to improve that process.
Thank you, Doug. Any other comments on this? Do we have anyone else? Their hand raised? I don't see anything. And Dr. Ames?
Can you give me a sense of where our region is compared to the entire county region as far as problematic regions? Are we in the top 5% tile of the worst or?
I'm gonna kick that over to you too.
Yeah, so.
I have a good sense for that, so.
Yeah, so problematic in outages and duration and frequency? Okay, let's see.
We have a line, very similar to the Port Angeles Saffo line, is our Coldwell Republic line. And we had similar situations that ran through Forest Service and trees were falling over, taking the line out. And the Forest Service did a giant forest management project out there. And we collaborated with them and cut a bunch of the trees down. So, knock on wood.
So, so when.
Spokane area, yeah.
When Victor gave the presentation earlier about the CRIS program to our WAPUDA executive board meeting last week, there was a second slide that showed projects and, and I don't know if this means anything, but our project was on the top of the list. So I'm just thinking that's, that's.
So there were two lists on that slide. It was not a funded project yet. It is an identified project.
Still at the top of the list. Any other comments or questions? I guess we lost all of our.
Or part of the work that we're doing with the foresters, all of this right now is laid the groundwork for a possible similar type of project.
And Mr. Grastrum, go ahead.
I apologize. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, so I live on Bear Creek Road adjacent to Bonneville Power Lines. And so there's a lot of Forest Service ground, you know, around here, like you were talking about. And I talked to the area manager for the US Forest Service a couple of years ago about, you know, cutting down these trees that Bonneville had spent the time to identify on their lands. And he said that no expansion could be made of the right of way, that it had to be a national decision. And it's a national policy for how big the right of way. Could you, could someone comment on that statement, whether it has, it can't be regional?
I really wish we had Holly here today to answer that. I, I think we, you know, I, the Forest Service, you know, they're, they're broken up into regions. I think we work with the, the forester in our region and, you know, but agreements with the Forest Service. I really don't know how they're made. Oh, Holly is on the phone. Perfect. Go ahead, Holly. We can't hear you, Holly.
Technical difficulties?
Yeah, we still can't hear you, Holly. Maybe we give her a minute to fix her audio. Are there any other questions?
Raise, so she's there. She can hear us.
She was showing muted up there. Holly, we're still not hearing you. While we're waiting, I guess it would be worthwhile to know whether those decisions are national or regional. It's hard for me to imagine they're not regional or at least regionally administered. So do we have a pathway to regional National Forest Service? Anybody know it? Look into that and figure that out.
My feedback and conversations that I've had, it's, it has been regional. So depending on who's managing which, you know, Forest Service territory, that's who you consult with. So Holly is our liaison with the Forest Service. And she has some good relationships. She was up here in October for the tour, the site tour that we did. She is engaged on this issue and in consultation with the Forest Service.
Hey folks, can you hear me now?
Thank you, Holly. Yes, go ahead.
I'm so sorry. I did, I didn't expect to have to actually speak and so I didn't make sure I had a connection that I could speak from. And then I raised my hand and realized, oh no, I don't have a connection. So sorry about that. Anyway, yeah. I, I'm not exactly sure what you thought the, the Forest Service spokesman told you. We can, we can talk a little bit about that more with them. But I don't believe that that's true. I think that the decision-making happens at the local level about a wider right of way. We have not asked the Forest Service to widen the right of way here. And it would, you know, obviously there'd be a lot of work to, to evaluate, to assess whether or not it made sense to, to widen the right of way here. But that is a decision, as far as I know, that would be made at the local level. I don't, I don't think that that's a national decision.
Right, thank you. Thank you.
Sorry about that.
Did you have anything else to ask or comment on, Mr. Grastrum?
Just that after the Bonneville had gone through and identified the trees, the Forest Service decided to do a thinning project in this one area. And they would cut a tree right next to one that Bonneville had identified as a danger tree. And I could show anybody that doesn't believe me exactly where these trees are. So not only did they not cut the tree that was identified as a danger tree, but they also made that a more dangerous tree, in my opinion, by cutting down adjacent trees. So just to comment.
All right, thank you, Mr. Grastrum. Anyone else have a comment or question?
I had a follow-up question for Mr., the gentleman that was just talking. Was that a long time ago that that happened or was that more recent?
It's been several years. I don't know, I don't know exactly how many years it's been, but it, it's been over two years for sure.
Oh, okay. I was hoping you were gonna say like 10 years, because I think we have, over the past few years, definitely improved that relationship. And I would be disappointed to hear that that's happening now. But I think that just shows there's plenty of opportunity for more coordination and collaboration with the Forest Service. So we can make sure that we are not doing things, or we're doing things that make sense and not doing things like you described.
And I do want to say that I believe that the PUD crews out here do an exceptional job of trying to identify the issue and work within the system and are here to support Bonneville when it is identified as a Bonneville's issue. So.
All right, thank you. Still see no other raised hands online. Am I missing anything, Eric? And anyone else in the room have anything they want to add? Yes, Karen.
Yeah, I, I just want to comment on, I, I think this is all really great. It's, it's, it's wonderful to have a better understanding of what the issues are and of the level of collaboration and cooperation that's going on. You know, from my perspective, working in the region, I think that there are two issues that concern me. One is obviously the transmission issue itself, but the other is the impact on residents, on economic development, on businesses, on schools. And, and so I think it's important to think about ways to mitigate the impact of ongoing outages at the same time that we're working on ways to minimize those outages. And so, you know, I'm, I'm really have been thrilled by the, the efforts that the PUD has been making, you know, really thinking creatively about things like the, the, the solar and battery backup for medical devices, about looking at some utility scale generation with battery backup. You know, I think, thinking about even smaller scale microgrids with multiple inputs, including batteries for, for key buildings, key services. One of the things that we hear trying to do economic development is that, you know, a really brief power outage for an industrial site, you know, all of their, all of their equipment goes offline. And then it takes, it can take hours to bring it back online. And so the, the productivity loss from a five-minute outage can be similar to the productivity loss for, you know, for an outage that's much longer because their downtime is similar. And so, you know, so that is a barrier to even getting businesses to locate in the area or for businesses to grow. So, you know, I think the ongoing collaboration is going to be really important and the transmission piece is really important. And, you know, look forward to continuing to work with the PUD and with Bonneville on, on thinking about how do we, how do we mitigate the impacts of, you know, of what's always going to be a challenging terrain.
This is a Delmo, so I appreciate you saying that, you know, one thing that's new to us, but not necessarily new to other utilities and other industries is the use of drones. We just got approval to do a pilot project, no pun intended, for having drones on two of our line crews, Olympia being one of them. And so I'm looking forward to using those during the next set of outages to help diminish and lower the duration of these outages. Anytime we use these drones to go check out locations at midnight of places that we do not have to go back out of the right of way. I mean, may save 15 or 20 minutes, but guess what? 15, 20 minutes add that up over all these locations on the right of way is going to add up. And so I'm looking forward to seeing that. So that's just something new that we just got a few months ago that I'm really excited about.
Yeah. And, and Karen, I would say that a lot of the discussion on that field trip that we had back in October turned to the fact that, you know, we didn't see solutions that are going to minimize the unplanned outages significantly in that right of way. So even though we're definitely going to take, try to take some steps, but we definitely talked a lot about, you know, some of the, you know, onsite generation and some of the things I think Sean and his team are assessing now, you know, and we understand the environmental concerns and the permitting issues, but, you know, the, the server farms that we have, the data centers that, that, you know, we're adding on to our system in various locations. Boy, they have rows of diesel engine generators outside. So there must be a way in, in some cases, because the, you know, the down outages to them are so significant. So, yeah, but I, I think we continue to collaborate and look at some of that remote generation and, and opportunities as well. And, and, you know, I think multiple solutions is, is probably what we need to look at.
Okay, so just on the drone. Just so you know, I mean, I've been nine years ago now, I was involved in the first utility drone conferences that were down in Colorado. And the FCC administrator and the MA administrator were there from Washington DC. And under no certain terms related about the online of site, drones, only on, but only on a approved process. And the only one that had been done at the time was actually burning. And then went through this whole scenario on burning, because they have so much, you know, threat that goes out through Montana and Wyoming and so forth. Then just to check switches and so on. But it was a big push for utilities across the United States to want to be able to have drone reconnaissance, including the LIDAR I mentioned earlier, because that technology not only allows you to gather information at the vegetation management, it also allows you to gather information on any regional issues. It could be spied out, could be armed. In those things, it has an opportunity to see what vegetation is in that process. So just so people know, it's not just a drone that you can just send 20 miles out, get here information and cut that. And there's licensing that you have to have 107A, 107C licensing in order to be a drone pilot. And those are all processes you work through. The line crews do it. I commend you for that. That's an amazing tool. I worked with PSC on that over there in Washington. Remember that runs through there and you have to drive 20 miles one way. I said, we're in control. We have that same issue here. And so having that opportunity to have drones, and we're getting the PUD, when the time comes, it's a great reconnaissance tool. But there is some stipulations that like the rules and regulations.
Appreciate that. We do have someone online, Darlene Holm. Go ahead.
Yeah, hi, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. So yeah, thank you for hosting this today. I was just wondering if these presentation slides were going to be provided via the Facebook page or on the website?
They're currently on the website.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I would like to pile on to what Karen Affeld was saying, you know, regarding, you know, our economy and, and economic development. I mean, we're a small market, remote rural county with many challenges to our economic stability, let alone any kind of development or growth. And, and, you know, we have one way in and, and one way out and, and power feels the same way to us. And I know that's not an easy problem to fix, but finding a way to improve reliability to the West End, because I believe, you know, we all thrive together. And if a third of our population is struggling, then it, it, it has a, you know, an effect on the rest of us. And if a third of our population is struggling, um, then it, it, it has a, you know, an effect on the rest of us. So anything that can be done, and I realize this is a complex, difficult, often most likely an expensive problem, but also a long-term problem. So any progress we can make towards fixing it is, uh, is going to be hugely beneficial to our, to our communities. And, uh, and this feels like progress to me today. And we really appreciate the cooperation from BPA. The CRIS program is a really a big step forward, in my opinion. And so anyway, that's just my observations of the.
I'd like to, I'd like to add on, especially the CRIS program. Until very recently, BPA cost analysis, cost benefit, really did not consider situations like our West End. Too few people have a major impact system-wide. And over the last year, I understand, they've made a, a substantial turn and recognize that, yes, uh, service reliability can be, be so bad for so few people, it still warrants taking action. In other areas of countries, most utilities, uh, they're governed by, uh, public service commissions, TCU's. If liability gets very, very bad, they have a recourse. And I think everybody here at the table now understands that we have to make that recourse with each other. Cause there's no federal, uh, agency that a customer can pursue other than BPA to get reliability. So the CRIS program, BPA being here and understanding that catastrophic, catastrophic bad reliability, even if it's not in the overall cost benefit in terms of safety or safety, is important to them now. And that was not the case five, 10 years ago. So I, I very much appreciate that.
And I also would like to underscore my appreciation, um, you know, this is what Bonneville was created for. For people, not for profits. And, uh, thank you so much for keeping faith with your origins and that long work that stands behind you so that we can keep going forward. So that the West End of Clallum County is not left behind as the 21st century continues to advance. An example that I use all the time, and I know that President Ames, uh, can relate. When I was teaching for Peninsula College online during the pandemic, uh, because, uh, we do not have reliable electricity, because we don't have high-speed internet or broadband, my students could not even read their textbooks, much less complete their assignments or take exams. And, um, that just cannot be. It's also a difference between whether people are able to work from home in a remote job, take care of their aging parent and their growing child at the same time. Without a sufficiently reliable connection and electricity, I, I know people who, out in EAB, been let go of a job that is actually doing what one would hope to do. And, um, so I, I tell those stories just to encourage you and to, you know, let you know that there's a very deep and lasting impact for all of the things that you have been doing to try to get us more stable, more reliable. And, um, so our people can dream. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments or anything for the good of the order? See anybody online with their hand raised? No, seeing nothing. Well, again, thank you to BPA and, uh, all the representation here today and to our stakeholders. It's unfortunate that, uh, some of our tribal partners weren't able to attend. I don't know if they're online, but, you know, they, we value our partnerships and relationships with the, the tribes, four of those which are in the West End. And, uh, and they, um, um, appreciate all that, that, uh, BPA has been doing to try to make improvements as well. So thank you all for coming. And if that's it, we're done.